Good evening, everybody. If you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to start our meeting tonight. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please take the roll.
Alderman Demus.
Present.
Alderman Thompson. Patac.
Here.
Reynolds.
Here.
Laveri.
Present.
Jepson.
Present.
Herndon.
Both Alderman Thompson and Alderman Herndon have excused absences tonight.
Crane.
Here.
Mayor Grove.
Here. Glad to start off our meeting as we always do with the chance for a public comment. Again, you're allotted three minutes. This is your time. We want to respect that. I have your chance for any thoughts, ideas, concerns, suggestions. At this point in time, I will not be responding to anything that gets brought up, but I will try to maybe answer those questions. And it's been basic practice here as a council, been doing the same thing throughout the course of the meeting. Again, we ask people to know that you doesn't have to wait just till council meeting for a public comment. You know, we can get ahold of us outside the council meeting hours to try to answer your questions in a more timely manner if needed. Everybody like to speak tonight, public comment?
I'd like to speak on a Vietnam combat veteran.
Thank you for your service, sir.
Thank you. As you can see, that's how many GIs we lost over Vietnam, something like that. The reason I came is I live at 338 Tante here in La Salle. And I have some issues with my alley. There's holes in my alley in front of my house. And I would just like to get them sealed, you know, patched. So that's basically it. I appreciate that.
So we can put that on a work order and get that taken care of you?
Thank you.
I'm sorry, sir. Sir, I didn't catch your name.
Dale Francis Butkowicz. Do you want me to spell that? Do you hear that?
Is that Polish?
Slovenian.
Slovenian.
You know, could you spell it for us just for the record?
Butkowicz, B-U-T, but, K-O, V is in Victor, V-I-T-Z is in zebra, butko, Fitz.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment tonight? Any other public comment tonight? Hearing none, we will go ahead and move forward with the approval of minutes as soon as we're ready for the approval of minutes.
So I move.
Motion Alderman Reynolds, Sir Alderman Demus to approve the minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carried. Discussion potential action on the following petitions.
Request from Abby Shank of La Salle elementary school district to hold a tag day collection on Friday, September 12th, 2025, and Saturday, September 13th, 2025, at the intersection of 11th and Buckland Streets, and related matters.
I assume those are open dates?
Yep, they are, and they're doing this for a DC trip. They did this last year as well, and I will notify them and let them know again that they want children in the intersections, obviously.
Yeah, I was going to say with seventh and eighth grade.
Right.
Trip. Yeah, I'll move for approval.
Second. Motion Alderman Laveri, Sir Alderman Jepson, all in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carried.
Request from Ameren Illinois to break around at 248 La Salle Road to retire gas service and related matters.
I move to approve Ameren's request.
Second.
Motion Alderman Laveri, Sir Alderman Jepson, all in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carried.
Request from Stratus Networks to break ground in city right of way on the south side of Second Street, between Gooding and Marquette Streets to install fiber optics network for 613 Third Street and related matters.
Your Honor, I move to grant your request from Stratus Networks to break ground in city right of way on the south side of Second Street, between Gooding and Marquette, to install fiber optics network for 613 Third Street and related matters.
Second. Motion Alderman Demus, Sir Alderman Reynolds, all in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carried. Point of order, Brian Brown, do we know anything about the Stratus Network?
They're a, I think a local, or I don't know local, but they are fiber that just like does small installations off of like the MTCO.
Okay, not that we can go citywide with?
No, I don't.
Okay, I had to ask.
No, I don't think so.
Thank you.
So they're also network that Northern Illinois laid down that time?
Yeah, they bought the contract out for the iFiber line.
Okay.
So they, I believe they run out of the FISA's office.
Okay, thanks, Curry.
Request from Ronald and Tracy Malcolm for a variance in waiver from the requirement of providing a sewer ejector pump pursuant to ordinance 2157 for premises being constructed at lot 28 of Vermillion View subdivision, commonly known as 149 Cavalier Court, and related matters.
I move that we grant the request for the sewer ejector pump at 149 Cavalier Court.
Second.
Motion Alderman Crane, Sir Alderman Jepson, please take the roll.
Alderman Demus.
Aye.
Patac.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Laveri.
Upstate.
Jepson.
Aye.
Crane.
Aye.
Let the record show the mayor votes aye, please.
For the record, too, the city engineer has indicated they comply with the ordinance in that regard. That requires these types, allows these types of exceptions in limited circumstances. And there'll be another, there'll be an ordinance on the agenda later on consistent with this request. And that ordinance also calls, as is required by the ordinance, for the residents to sign an agreement indicating they will abide by the requirements.
On a side note, it's good to see another home going up in Vermillion View, and I'm very excited. It's a former fellow classmate of mine. Her and her husband moved back to the area. At least she's in leadership at the Tanica School District, so it's good to have those people back in the area. Reports to the officers. Communications. Bids. No appointments, resignations tonight. Standing committees.
Discussion and potential action regarding the recommendation of the finance committee to accept and place on file the fiscal year 2025 financial audit and related matters.
Your Honor, I move the finance committee recommended to accept and place on file the fiscal year audit of 2025 and related matters.
Second.
Motion Alderman Patac, Sir Alderman Laveri to accept the financial recommendation, to accept the financial audit. Please take the roll.
Alderman Patac.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Laveri.
Aye.
Jepson.
Aye.
Crane.
Aye.
Demus.
Aye.
I appreciate Finance Director John Duncan and his team and the auditing team for getting through that. Thank you, John. Special committees, all business.
Authorization of pay request number six for municipal well and pump totaling $255,195.62 for works completed to date on 2024 water system improvements, deep well drilling project, and related matters.
I move that we authorize pay request number six municipal well pump for $255,195.62.
Second.
Motion Alderman Laveri, Sir Alderman Reynolds, please take the roll.
Alderman Reynolds.
Aye.
Laveri.
Aye.
Jepson.
Aye.
Crane.
Aye.
Demus.
Aye.
Patac.
Aye.
Very excited to announce that we're basically at phase two of that now. I believe the first group got to about a thousand feet. They laid the casing down, is that right, Brian Brown? And now the next group should start digging us to the west.
Probably three thousand feet.
Yeah. This is the point where the group wants to potentially go 247. I think we're going to see how the, how it is, noise level, and how they do it. And progress to see if that's necessary or not, so.
How deep did you say the estimate was, Brian?
About between 2,500 and 3,000 feet.
Okay.
Authorization of pay request number two for universal asphalt and excavating totaling $266,155.20 for work completed to date on 2025 road improvements, MFT project, and related matters.
Your Honor, I make a motion that we approve the pay request number two for universal asphalt and excavating, as read.
Second.
Motion Alderman Reynolds, Sir Alderman Demus, please take the roll.
Alderman Laveri.
Aye.
Jepson.
Aye.
Crane.
Aye.
Demus.
Aye.
Patac.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Authorization to hire Hair Construction to line storm sewer on Eighth Street between Marquette and Joliet Streets at a cost of $31,488 and related matters.
I move authorize higher construction to line the sewer on Eighth Street between Marquette and Joliet Street.
Second.
At a cost of $31,488 and related matters.
Second.
I believe that, I want to also make the point that from what I understand from talking with city engineer, given the nature of this circumstance, it will require a super majority. You have six aldermen here. It will require six aldermen firmly voting on this to pass.
I can give a little background on this before we decide on this, if you'd like. I, this is a sewer that we is failing on the north side of Eighth Street between Marquette and Joliet. It's a storm sewer from the old 1971 aluminized storm sewer that we have done some major replacements on Marquette and Sixth, and Sixth over by Buckland. This is a stretch that we didn't televise. It was more of a feeder to the big lines. So I was unaware that this one was failing. We had it televised by Sewer Tech, that, our company that did the sewer cleaning. And they identified a 10 to 12-foot piece that was in pretty bad shape. But the other parts of the sewer are starting to fail, but we could do a patch. Well, if you look at the two numbers that I received, one from the local company, Performance Pipeline, they gave a $32,000 for a 10-foot patch and 50-some for a, $53,000 for the full length. And then I, knowing those dollar amounts, I felt I better go and get the other contractor we've used. So I got the number from Hair Construction, and theirs was just, what, $31,488 to do the whole entire stretch? So they were less than the 10-foot patch. So we do have numbers in the budget, we do have amounts in the budget for doing sewer lining, so it falls under that. But getting quotes, kind of an emergency situation, I felt that we, that Attorney McFederer need to bring, need to bring up the point that we probably do need a super majority for this.
Did we use Hair before?
Yes. Hair did all of the televising, and they did the big sewer lining.
So they have a 30-foot shorter distance to go than Performance did?
Well, if you, if you look at the letter that I wrote, I actually wheeled off the distance, and I got about 327 and a half feet, or 328. So I don't know why theirs is so much difference, but they gave a per foot price. So that would, the unit price per foot would hold, not the total cost. So that's why in the letter, I stated that their per foot, their total cost would probably be more like $45,428 based on the 138.50 per foot. And then after the sewer is lined and repaired, city forces will remove the walk that there's a void underneath, fill the void, and then we'll put the sidewalk back in.
Thank you, Brian Brown. We had a motion from Alderman Demus, Second Alderman Reynolds, please take the roll.
Alderman Jepson.
Aye.
Crane.
Aye.
Demus.
Aye.
Patac.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Laveri.
Aye.
Who's at the record? Show the mayor votes aye as well.
Additionally on that, I did contact Hair this morning and asked them how quickly they could get to it. And it's not a, it's not an uncommon size like our 60-inch and 54-inch where they had to bring big trailers and things to get it done. They feel they can get it done within two weeks, so they, you know, they will be able to get at it relatively quickly.
Thank you, Brian Brown.
Authorization of pay request number 26 for Vissering Construction Company totaling $48,355.95 for work completed to date on aerobic digester conversion project and related matters.
Can I make a statement on this one, too? Before we get into approving or discussion on this. This change order, what we had done on the digester project, we extended the work for the Route 6 Bridge over Little Vermillion, so we didn't have to go and procure a new contractor. We used Vissering to take care of being the general contractor on the sewer repairs on the bridge, which we did get the permit for on Friday, so we're going to be moving forward on that quickly. This change order is for the majority of the change orders, for the material costs, that purchase of the materials for the replacement on the bridge. The insulation, the hangers, and the four sticks of ductile iron pipe we had to replace. So that's what this change order, the majority of it is for. I think $43,000 of the $48,000 is for that.
Do we say what time, when, that's the time of crack the man, somebody fixing it?
When? I've been texting back and forth with Tom Brady with JV Contracting, who is the person, the company doing the work. The lift is not available until early next week, but they're going to possibly go with a boom and a man cage to start doing the stuff on the ends and getting it ready for when they have to do the center part, then they can do it. So he's going to try to start moving on it tomorrow or Thursday, or Friday.
Obviously, gentlemen, this has been something right high on the party list since we found out about it two months ago?
Four, five months in April.
Yeah, so, you know, is it permanent? Do we have permanent hand now or not?
Permanent is hand. I emailed it to you on Friday. We got it, yeah.
So, I mean, it's been an issue, and I appreciate Brian, you know, kind of trying to stay on the powers that be that, let's get this permit going.
The issue is it bounces between district office and central office, back and forth.
But obviously, we're what, $1,500, almost $2,000 a day?
$2,000 a day.
So, I mean, it's hurt us a little bit, and we cannot do insurance on that. That's just something, you know, thank goodness we have the wastewater, you know, fund right now, but. Thanks, Brian, for your work on it.
Did we not do something with this before, or some, or something along?
We, we passed the, being able to haul the sewage from the lift station to the plant, you get bills on that. This is for the actual material for the contractor to put back up.
Okay.
It's not for the other, the day-to-day things that are going on. This is for the insulation, the hangers, the pipe, the, everything else.
It's council's pleasure.
Is that on the agenda?
Yeah, I'm going to pay for the authorization.
We're talking about pay request number 26, correct, Brian?
Second, yes.
Yeah.
Best area of the digester, okay, so the bridge isn't on, the bridge pipe isn't on the agenda, right?
The, the change order is part of the digester.
Okay, that's part of the related matters, okay.
Yes, they talked to EPA, and that it was discussed that that was the best way to handle taking care of the sewer issue under a, under the contract where we could extend the contract of the general contractor to take care of that.
Okay.
A motion for Alderman Jordan Crane.
Aye, second.
Second for Alderman Reynolds, please take the roll.
Alderman Crane.
Aye.
Demus.
Aye.
Patac.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Laveri.
Aye.
Jepson.
Aye.
Record to show the mayor votes aye, please.
Discussion and potential action regarding review and potential changes to nuisance ordinances specifically related to fines and fees included, but not limited to those regulating grass and weeds and related matters.
I ask this to be put on the agenda. I was gone three years, and I came back dealing with the same property, Mr. Hyden, and some grass. And in fact, two of those properties are new landlords, and it's still dealing with the same problem. It's telling me that something is not working in the system. And, you know, the ordinance are there for a deterrent to get people to cut the grass and with the goal of them maintaining the properties. So looking through all the nuisance ordinances, a couple of things I found out is we have fines anywhere, minimum fines anywhere from $50, $75, $100 up to $750. We have multiple hearing officers. So when somebody has, say they have their first offense for grass cut, they get a $50 fine. So if they show up in another month, then they get a different hearing officer, then they get a $50 fine. And so what I'm looking to do here, I'm looking to just make things a lot simpler, try to get better communications between the officers that are, the departments that are issuing the fines and the hearing officers. So if we make all the minimum fines at $200 and the maximums at $500, then the hearing officers will know we're all nuisances, that's what the fine is. And it'll probably be a better deterrent. I mean, if you're paying $50 and you're moving again, trust me, if you made $200, you're not going to do it again.
Is the $200 stated in the ordinance?
No, 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 right now it's stated at $50.
I mean, is it stated at $50 right now?
A lot of the polls.
So we can put $200 right now without changing the ordinance?
Well, I would, yeah, I would say we just change the fines and the nuisance ordinance to a minimum of $200 to a maximum of $500. And the $200 is the first offense, and then whatever depends after is $500. And then we need to communicate that to the hearing officers.
Just so you know, they're, the hearing officers are from the same law firm. So, you know, might be Jeff Rowe, and Tom Tack, Tom, they're on the same page. They know exactly what's going on, you know, and Dennis.
And they communicate with each other, from what I understand.
But the whole thing is if we, we set a fine minimum and a maximum for everything, it's the same, you know, because right now it's all over.
So what's your, what's your promote, proposal, motion?
My motion would be we make the minimum fine for all the nuisance orders, $100 for the first offense, and $500 maximum for the second repeated offense. That's my motion.
Second.
And let me just indicate a few things. There's a range right now. Alderman's correct. The reason there was a varied, I think, these ordinances were passed over a period of time, and I think some of the fines were less, because it was thought some of the offenses should have a lesser fee for a first offense. But certainly, it's within the discretion of the council to provide a minimum fine of $200 on each and every nuisance ordinances that are covered for in the ordinances. And these are generally section 91.01, the fines are generally more towards the end of that section. And they're indicated in section of the city code.
91.99.
91.99, that is correct, Alderman. And there's various ones there. Right now, there's a range between 100 and 500 on some, and 60 and 750. So you could, you could change it to a minimum of 100 and a maximum of 500 each one. 200 and maximum 5. And it also should be pointed out that, you know, each and every day that an offense exists can be an additional fine if the hearing officer feels that's appropriate and is discretion. So there is some teeth in it already, but certainly if you want to change the minimum fine to 200 on each and 500 max, that's lower than the max fine, actually, but.
No, that's just for the second offense.
Yeah, second, yeah.
Usually gives them like seven days, I think, if I read it correctly.
We have to give three-day notice to let them cure it before you.
Always getting a fine without having a chance to correct the.
Right.
The way it works though, somebody waves a lot of these guys' grass.
Finance Director not to put you in the spot, but you know, not only do these folks get a fine, they also get charged for, if we had to come cut the grass, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, they get.
$190 bucks. They kind of get three days' notice to cut it.
So they're gonna, they're gonna get $200 fine now plus $190.
So what do you get? How many, John?
I think we just have had a few this year that we've cut.
I had three in my ward that shouldn't have been cut. So that's what I'm coming up on. I, I mean, I really believe that there isn't a, you know, people are just like, because of the small fine, they're just like, okay. So if we put, if we change it, see how it works, we're going to always change it back to.
Got a motion from Alderman Demus and a second from Alderman Reynolds. It's the council's pleasure.
Your Honor, I would like to ask our chief of police what his opinion of this is.
That's a good question, Alderman Patac. I like your thinking, Alderman Demus. The only thing is, is a lot of these people, they don't have the money to, I mean, I like compliance. I mean, I, trust me, I want this town cleaned up more than anybody else here. But I kind of have a good system going where we know who the offenders are. And we've got a couple landlords in town, one specifically on First Street. I don't want to name him right now, but he's getting whacked. I mean, I go after these people, and Dennis will bring me these tickets. So what I do every spring comes around, I send the guys out and break them down into wards to help Dennis out. So I'll break down Ward 1 and 2. Dennis will do 3 and 4. So with that, I'll have the guys go out, and everybody that's got that violation, we write it. Now, the complaint is, why don't you give me a warning? Well, if I have to warn you that your grass is eight inches high, we got a bigger problem. I agree with you. It's, no, I agree. I don't think it's so much, though, that they don't want to pay it. I think it's laziness and miscommunication on the tenant's part with the landlords, but.
So not to put you in a spot, chief, but how did the street properties get by us and the dizz is talking about?
Well, I mean, I call the dogs. Usually, we do the first two months, and then after that, it's kind of just up to Dennis. I mean, I'm not, he goes out there and gets them, but, I mean, alls we need is, and if we don't have it, somebody, I wish somebody would just call. Yeah, no, Dennis does a good job with, right.
You know, I've got three, I got three since May.
Yeah.
Two of them are the same rental properties that I dealt with when I was on the council for three years. And I was gone for 15 years.
Yeah.
For three years, and I come back, and two of the three rentals are different landlords, so they're still doing things. So that's kind of, it's kind of a burden, but it's good. So, you know, so if the hearing, if the ghost of the hearing officer, if somebody comes up and says, hey, I can't, you know, I can't feed my kids, I can't pay the fine, it's up to the hearing officer, you can reduce it, Danny?
Oh, absolutely. Just like we, just like we do with the compliance. If somebody actually says, hey, look, I got a cut, I got this ticket, I'll work with people. However, we're not going to be in the business of sending notices out to everybody saying, hey, could you cut it? We whack them. We do. We go after, I mean, the guys probably, we probably have about 100 of them from the spring. I mean, and that's no joke, that's.
Yeah, we do a good job.
We do, we do do that, I mean. Yeah, yep, with, yep, yep.
Right, Steve, that took over two weeks to get that approved.
And that's what I'm going to talk about with the new chief coming in, is I've expressed to him multiple times, like, hey, this is, this is a very important city code violations. I take it very serious, as do all you guys and Dennis. And so, you know, I'll get up in the morning and I'll ride along, and people don't know this, but I'll have a cup of coffee and go right around town, and I'll find five of them. And they send tickets all in the mail. And I usually start off at about 100. Now, if somebody calls and says, hey, chief, I got a cut, or they'll come down and say, I got a cut, I'll work with somebody. I have no, but it isn't going away. I'm not going to dump, you know, but I agree, it's, the compliance factor, I think, comes in, it's, I don't. I don't warn them. We don't, if I have to warn you, who? Dennis will give you different warnings about maybe your property being cleaned up.
To be clear, he has no warrant before we go cutting for one night, but they're not warning, he might, he might take it down well ahead of time.
But your theory, Dennis, is absolutely right. Sometimes when we get these violations, and we, me and Dennis will sit and talk, and I'll say, this one specific landlord, 500, 500. Well, now he starts sitting there thinking, okay, wow, this is getting big. I agree. Now, there are some people that, you know, get a, they let it get away. It's their one time in the springtime, and again, I'll work with that, but we do have some issues with certain landlords that, but they, they're not getting by with. I mean, in fact, the ones in your neighborhood reach out to me. I mean, I have no problems with, you know, taking a look at those.
But, you know, so, I'm like, I'm in my ward every day.
Sure.
I'm in some part of that ward every day. I've been in every street, every alley in my ward. I'm in the ward every day. So I'm more aware of probably everybody else than I am, and that's what I do. So, looking at the issue, I think this affects my job.
With, with one of the things, really quick, let me just state, I mean, we, what, the maximum, I can't, sometimes we up that till. If we've got repeat offenders, I mean, I kind of have my, we kind of, Dennis and I talk, we get the ones that are repeat offenders, and that goes up and up. And then it goes with, no, no, even if you cut it, it's not, you're not getting any, you're not getting any deal because this is your third time that we've had to tell you. I do, I mean, we do keep an eye on that, so, I mean.
It's all, for me, it's all.
Sure. And majority of our tickets go to landlords. That's why when my guys write these tickets, I don't have them write who they're going to, because I want to see who the landlords are, because we have a certain problem with a couple of landlords. Extremely problematic, to the point, one, I told them, I'd like to go around and take a picture of all your properties, because they're dumps, and let the paper see what you're doing.
For Mary Beth to do is landlords that have some opportunities for improvement. Story. Any other question, Alderman Patac, if you could? Anybody else?
I was going to say, take into account the weather. I know there was private homes, there were some times that we had heavy rain, heavy rain, heavy rain, and the temperature was in the 90s, and, you know, some of the, it's hard to get out there in that weather.
We have a motion, we have a second.
I'd like to add that, yes. Alderman Demus, do you talk to Dennis himself? Because I walk my ward, my wife, and our new child, we like to walk, and we walk past these properties, same, same you see. And I'll shoot Dennis a quick text message. If he don't get back to me immediately, it's by 7 o'clock the next morning. And progress is made very quickly on those properties, I will say.
Gets to like 9:00 AM. He's part-time.
Yeah. So I'll just say, I, I pointed out the problem's fixed right away.
If those, if, if it's same ones over three years, then I would not think the minimum fine should even be in discussion with them. You should be then going after the higher ones, so raising the minimum isn't really aimed at them.
Well, I'm thinking they never got the higher, higher, they never got charged with a higher fine, otherwise they wouldn't be doing it. Well, it's my property, I got the maximum.
Certainly it's up.
Might have a minimum, I'm, first of all, we have.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I have another question, I haven't used Gov Alert in a couple of years, is it still active?
GovPilot, and I believe that it still is, yes.
Okay, Dennis checks it. Huh? Or whatever the app is on my phone.
So, so if we have these problematic property owners, I, I, I can't see raising this to two hundred dollars, there's. I would, you gotta, you know, you have elderly residents, you have weather issues, you have all kinds of things, what about just revoking the rental license? If they're gonna be problematic, a fine's not gonna do anything, they're collecting tons of cash every month.
Yeah, then they end up in court, like, you know, like, private attorney, they'll put ten years.
But it's the same thing, it's, it's uh, rent, rental property versus private.
Again, just so you know, when they have the ordinance court, it's gonna be up to chief and, and, and uh, Dennis and also.
That's right.
The person here to say, hey, Joe, you know, Joe Jeps, this is your first offense, we're not gonna charge you that, it's gonna be, you know, they, they have a little leeway, you're not necessarily to get the two hundred.
Yeah, but if you have a minimum, if you have a minimum fine, right now.
You have that right away, they're gonna say, oh crap, you know.
Right now you have discretion under the ordinance to go with the minimum of a hundred if you think it's reasonable. If you pass two hundred as the minimum fine, you're not gonna have the discretion technically following the ordinance unless you're gonna drop the charge. The, the advantage of having a range that you have here is that for the persons you wanna give a break to, you, you can, e- easier, uh, without dismissing it, am I right, chief?
Yeah.
No, what's the difference between a hundred and two hundred, Jim?
The two hundred is.
I can still lower it to twenty five if I'm the guy in this chair here, I'm on it. If it's two hundred, you can lower it to twenty five still.
Yeah, I, I, I.
I don't know what you're talking, there's no difference.
I don't believe that under the ordinance, now you may, you may give them, but, but, what I'm saying is under the ordinance, you're not supposed to go below the minimum, I'm just saying.
Well, we go below a hundred.
But paying the fine doesn't mean you don't get, you don't have to mow the lawn anyway, so it's.
Correct. The, the whole goal is not to make the money, right? It's, it's to change behavior.
You're a little bit.
I think we all agree to that.
I know, but what I'm saying is you're still, no matter what the fine is, they still have, they still have to mow it.
What else is nice about this, we have a motion, we have a second, everybody can vote how they want, and we will buy.
It doesn't get them out of, it doesn't get them out of mowing it, but and, and, and just, so, we will, if, if this passes, then we'll have an ordinance prepared for the next meeting, there will, that'll be the final vote on it, okay, cause we didn't know what.
No, this is just discussion and then give some guidance.
For clarity, this vote is to give Alderman, our uh, attorney McFederan guidance to craft an ordinance that we can all.
And the only reason I raise these additional things from a legal standpoint is so that we don't wait two weeks and somebody comes up with additional questions. This way you, you all pretty much know.
So to remind everybody, we have a motion by Alderman Demus, a second one by Reynolds.
I'm sorry, but I, I have one, one, cause some of this came up that makes me think that if you go below the minimum and you're breaking the ordinance, that person would, wanted to fight it, they could fight it. So why not leave it where it is and let's let them have the discretion of what they wanna do with it?
Can't we just give a council.
Cause like, you know, like, to me, I, I'm happy with Dennis, the property I have, if I call him, he's all over it. And the idea that, that our chief and Dennis can show up and have the discretion, that they know these people, and if they have to increase the fine that can force it, they're gonna increase it. And then what I just heard that if we go below the minimum, that's, that's breaking the ordinance, I'm not in favor of that.
All right, we do that all the time.
But I'm saying, wouldn't that be an avenue for somebody who wanted to fight it?
We do it all the time, I mean, that's the, that's.
But you do it on the discretion of, you know, the person, they, uh, it's a one time. I'm all, I think that's great.
Call the roll, please. Then you should probably make it zero to something. I think, I think the initial thing is, is, is to get that wild fact out there, hey, shoot two hundred dollars, I'm gonna get hit. But again, you know, Diz, you only been back a little bit, so you're gonna give Dennis and Smudgey a chance to.
Well, I, I don't have any problem with you on it, it's, I, hey, somehow I got a lot from that ground, I think that's not going to. You know, they do.
Well, if they already have, it's, it's over, Texas, Texas, they have the, the leeway to change to, to finally make things alright.
But it just seems to me that, that's the same landlord, and why are they doing it? So that's telling me that wherever they're getting.
Take the roll, please.
Alderman Demus.
Hi.
Patac.
Nay.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Lavery.
Nay.
Jepson.
Nay.
Crane.
Nay.
Thank you, uh, fails uh, two to four.
Good discussion, guys. But again, I would definitely, you know, again, we need to see from Tom, from uh, Dennis and, and chief, what, what, you know, these folks, what's, what's their history, right? And we know it.
Discussion and poten- potential recommendation for consideration of additional licensing and regulation of short-term rentals and other related matters.
Okay, I asked Bruce to be put on, but you can bring that. All right. I have. I have a short-term, well, I have a, a short-term rental in a tenth street. On tenth street in my ward, that's masquerading as, I, I have a rental that's masquerading as a short-term rental, and it's not licensed. So I had a complaint from an neighbor who's probably gonna be here tonight, we need to talk. That it, there's nine people living in the residence for more than thirty days, she said nine days. Our ordinance says over thirty days, it has to become a, a, a rental. Yeah, numerous concerns of what construction they were doing in there. Dennis and chief, they contacted the owner, who is a corporation out of Scruggles, he's the man. He referred them to the property manager, who called Dennis and David Smudge too, and explained that they have construction, uh, living in there. So. In this store.
Well, I think the question is, is what do we need to, let's just get to the point, we, we, we had to figure out, I, we, we haven't agreed with Airbnbs. Because we do get revenue off them, and it's probably more revenue than if we would've collected, from what we collect from all the rental licenses combined, right? So I don't think it wouldn't affect the Airbnb because of one situation, I think we need to classify this one, that you're not an Airbnb, or a short-term rental. So now you have to fall near the license of a, a regular rental.
So.
Right? Because of the time it was.
Rent, rent prepared some handouts for us.
Okay.
And this one in the neck here is, uh, would be on page three of a handout. And it says, uh, side by side comparison table, how it sounds, how it, home little cities, miss, miss Dallas, regular short-term rent. So, my other point is here, if we have one, one short-term rental disguising itself, we get under the license we have more than one. So if you look across the sound's recommendation. We have ev- ev- everything that we need on. You know, under uh, short-term rental, obviously, minimum stay none, maximum stay thirty days, occupied not none, tax rate, five percent hotel tax. Permit required, yes, residential permit for over thirty days. Well, that's where, we don't know which ones are out there that are short-term rentals disguising themselves and that, or rentals disguising themselves are short-term. So, in all the handouts, we have some different cities here.
And to clarify, Kurt provided that, that handout there for the, yeah, council.
Kurt provided this, all right. So I would say that if you look at Grand Ridge, they seem to have the best ordinance in the two. So I would say that we start the process to build an ordinance to where we can uh, lower all our short-term rentals are and have them permitted, similar to what our reference ordinance is, so we don't have short-term rentals getting away with being around, not getting the permit, and so we know where they're at. So that's what my motion would be, start the process.
How do we find where they're at?
To define short-term rentals versus rentals.
May, may I? Well, first thing we have to discuss in the council, then I, I've looked into this a little since it just came up again. Anybody else, any questions first, and I'll, otherwise I can provide some.
So we, I'm gonna say one thing real quick, so if I'm Jeff Rowe and I have a, a short-term rental that is, I'm playing as a long-term rental. So now that you're requiring me as a short-term rental to license, I'm gonna say, ooh, sign me up, no, I'm gonna keep going under the radar until I get caught, just like this guy got caught. And I wanna, I, I'd say, I don't think that many people are actually doing that, I mean, there's probably rentals out there right now that we don't know about, we're finding out about them by word of mouth, from live experiences from people.
You're right.
It has to be about, basically a participant program, and again, back to my initial thing, and I just learned from Jim, is, we're making pretty good revenue on Airbnbs, I don't think we wanna to ruin that.
Well, I'm not saying ruin the revenue, I'm just saying that.
But if we're gonna charge them, make them record, charge them to record, to get a license.
So maybe you don't have to charge, maybe you just have, you know, we need a way to find out how many short-term rentals we have now, because we don't have a way to do.
Well, Kurt, Kurt's gonna have to look, my revenue, you can look too, right?
Yeah, just only if they use Airbnb.
Yeah, that's, that.
If they're verbal or one of the others.
That's our reminder, everyone, just keep it to one person at a time, please speak into your microphone for the record, thank you.
Uh, uh, yeah, Alderman uh, Demus is correct, if, if they are registered with Airbnb specifically, we see that revenue because we have the agreement with Airbnb. But if they're through another third party like Guestly or Verbo or something like that, we have no idea. So there, we could, there could be seven Airbnbs out there that are using a different third-party platform that we do not have an agreement with, and we are not collecting that revenue.
All right. How far are you getting in agreements with those, economic director?
How far are we with an agreement on those?
You started a process yet?
No, we have not.
To reach out to them? That might be something we wanna do.
But we don't have any penalty for not paying the five percent. Yes, there is. If, if everybody else is done with their questions, I will be happy to.
You, you said we could have, ask questions.
Yeah, I did, I just, I'm waiting, if, yeah, if you've got another question, anybody else has one? Okay, the, Alderman Demus raises a legitimate concern about getting compliant with both the short-term rental ordinance and the residential rental ordinance. The particular person that he's talking about in the property wouldn't have any effect by requiring short-term rentals to register, because it's not a short-term rental. It's for longer than thirty days and has been for a couple of months, so they should already be complying with the residential rental ordinance, and if they did that, then we would know, if they don't do that, they can be cited for failing to register with that and find under other provisions of that rental. So they're already in non-compliance, they can already been pursued, they can already have their premises required to be inspected because they are more than a thirty-day rental. So you're not really talking about someone in that circumstance who is a short-term rental, just disguising themselves, because they're not a short-term rental. They owe compliance with their residential rental ordinance. Now, in regard to people who are short-term rentals, which we term in our ordinance, this is transient residential rental units. The last time they came up for discussion under this, which was, I think, within the last six months or so, if my recollection is correct. There was brought out, in our already present residential transit, or short-term rental ordinance, we have provisions, not only for the payment of the five percent fine, five percent, but if they fail to comply voluntarily as the ordinance requires all landlords to do, that if they fail to comply voluntarily, that there are provisions in there for twelve percent interest for failure to comply, and additionally for a penalty on that, in addition to that. So I think the last time it was discussed, there was gonna be an effort made to check Verbo, Guestly, any of these others, to see who they were and then to give them a chance to voluntarily come into compliance and then go after, the mayor just raised an important, a great question, has any of those efforts been made? I don't know whether they have, if they have, then I would think that if these folks were put on notice and, hey, if you are complying now and paying five percent, you're not gonna have these additional penalties, they would do it. And I would think that would bring in most, anyone who's gonna comply with just a registration ordinance into compliance. And I don't, I don't think, I don't know if any of that has been uh, attempted or not through any research, but that was what I had heard when we discussed this the last time, it was going to be attempted.
There, there has been an approach made in, to investigating proposed Airbnbs, uh, that are Verbos or whatever in the, in the, uh, in the community, so we do have a, a kind of an idea, but as far as like approaching Verbo or anybody like that with an agreement, like we do with Airbnb specifically, uh, that, we haven't gone any further than that. We're more or less investigating what, who exists and what our assumptions are as to whether or not they are actual Airbnb.
Well, I, I don't know that it'd be required to approach Verbo itself, if you have the people who are doing it, then you could approach them and indicating you should be complying as a landlord under our ordinance, and if you wanna come into voluntary compliance, we'll make these arrangements, pay the five percent. If you don't, then uh, we would do it, now.
Yeah.
Their alternative is, yes, you can, you can uh, institute a registration uh, program, and we will have to do some checking to make sure that uh, we don't run afoul of our understanding with Airbnb, which has the significant revenue. I was just throwing out the point that if this other alternative hasn't been attempted, it might be something to think about.
I got, I got two statements here, number one, I'm not, I'm old, I'm old-fashioned, right, so I still do hotels. Tom, you're probably more up to speed, do you do Airbnbs?
I don't.
Okay. Does anybody do Airbnbs? So, and, and Airbnb's never gonna survive if they don't get good ratings, right? So you're, you, there's all, there's an automatic thing, we're gonna keep their, their property up the park, cause people are gonna either judge you thumbs up or thumbs down, you, so there's a good incentive already to keep Airbnbs in compliance of making sure it's nice, right? Um, that one, probably, now this is, is that already now this Julie, uh, going after that with, as a rental?
Well, we're, we're at it right now, is uh, after we did some investigation, and then uh, Kurt was on vacation, we got back, I got, I got with Kurt. And I asked him, is in Airbnb, he goes, no, I don't have a list it. So then uh, Dennis and Smudge went up there and talked to the people, and uh, we'll talk to the property manager, and she says, yeah, I got people living in there. You know, doing construction, that's what we do. And uh, so Dennis told me that uh, he was going to do an inspection of the property after the construction was done. And then if, if uh, they were gonna make a rental out of it, and just gonna have to do a rental license, and if they're gonna sell it, they're still going to do an inspection.
So the trigger, the trigger is when they're done with the, the work?
Yeah.
Okay.
So they have building permits?
Yeah, I think they just sell it.
Do they have building permits?
No, they don't have building.
Do they now?
No.
Well, they need to.
Because we, we haven't been in the building to inspect it because uh, everything that they said that they're doing, it doesn't require a building.
Okay.
They're doing cement board, drywall, which I assume.
Just replacing what's there.
Uh, uh, shower tile, which probably would be plumbing, but you know, if it isn't beige or plumbing, it, it doesn't require, you know, I guess it would open up the wall. But at this point, they told us that uh, the property manager told us that the neighbor was complaining later, because he offered to do the ba- the bathroom. And uh, that's why he's upset, and I talked to him, and he said, well, there's no way I'm blocking it off. So, so right now we're just waiting for him to get it done, and we're gonna do an inspection, and then if you're gonna do a rental, we're gonna do a rental.
We'll make sure we save the, save the.
I have a question too.
I, I guess I want to think, yeah, so, both of these things I brought up, somehow it got off on a tangent, that I'm not happy with, with what Smudge does or Dennis.
No.
I'm very happy with both of them, I've dealt with Dennis numerous times since I've been.
Oh, but nobody feels that way, you're just trying to put some secrets in.
It was, it was, I, I still want it, I think they're both doing a great job, and my dealings with Kurt have been, you know, so. I, my problem is that, you know, there's no rules, and I just want to throw a, a stronger way to do it.
We haven't, do we still have an ordinance about how many unrelated people can occupy a unit?
There isn't, there isn't a, there isn't a, I looked in everyone, I couldn't find, you could have as many people as you're allowed in a building, I guess. I don't know, unless it gets past a maximum, so. If it's owner occupied, there's no, there's no set, because the apartment house across from us, that's owned by the same company. Dennis wrote two tickets on it, and one of the complaints was, is they have, you know, they have twenty people in and out of that place. And uh, Dennis says it's owner occupied on the, on first floor, so it's just like your own house, you can have as many people over any time you want, so. So I don't know, that's kind of a great area, I couldn't find anything on it.
We had a debate about this years ago, you were probably there, there's about, you know, like three unrelated families living in a house or something like that.
Yeah, I don't know if you ever resolved it, I think it's came to the same discussion.
It's all hard to prove, you know?
Yeah, I think that's the thing, it's, the legwork is hard.
Yeah.
We have a, a motion by uh, Alderman Demus to start the process, do we have a second?
Start the process to develop some short-term rental.
Second.
Rules.
As long as you're gonna, as long as you're gonna look the skirts to legitimate ones.
Motion by Alderman Demus and Alderman Reynolds, please take the roll, to start the process on committal with short-term rental, um.
Agreed.
Alderman.
What you're talking about amending what you have is what you're talking about.
Alderman Patac.
Aye.
That was an aye?
Yeah.
I, I can't hear.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Lavery.
I until I seen the final ordinance, I guess. We haven't just, I don't think we discussed enough specifics, so.
Jepson.
Aye.
Crane.
Aye.
For the record, I'm a no-on-ice. I'm the only one that's a no-on-ice. Cause I don't think we need to address it. Sorry.
Thank you.
Now I'm a no-on-ice.
Yeah, I'd like to add also on this topic. I, if you search LaSalle, Illinois on VRBO or Airbnb. I would guess there's probably between twenty and thirty short-term rentals available in this community. And every one of those property owners, like the mayor said, is taking really good care of their property because they want it rented out. And I would guess most of these people are coming to this community to rent these places to go to Starbuck, to do, to do the tourist things in our area. I don't wanna make it harder for these people to operate. Yeah, I mean, they're, 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 they're really maintaining their properties and doing a good thing. So I, I'm open to conversation.
It's directed at people that are doing on Facebook and other, uh, social media or some kind of, uh. Rental, short-term rental, college, everyone in access. So all it is is to start the process.
I think they're avoiding the long.
So who's gonna lead this process? Are you gonna lead this process or?
Oh, you, yeah, you, you don't work, so I got plenty of time. It's on Facebook.
You can't go down rent shit next week.
I hope you live long enough to make it.
I hope everybody does.
Resting of our retirement, you gotta live long enough to make it.
Yes.
I think they're avoiding the long-term rental ordinance as well as.
I highly recommend it.
All right.
All right, we're under, uh, any other old business, I guess. Uh, we talked a little bit about the sewer line or Route Six. We talked about the well. That's all I had for old business. Any other business, gentlemen? New business? You know, new business right now? I wanted to just bring up a couple of things here. We do have Jazz in the Street and Barbecue Blues, not this upcoming weekend, but the next, but it'll be before our next meeting. So look, see everybody out there. Hope the weather looks nice for that. Uh, very excited for that. And that's all I have under new business. Discussion, potential action, the following additional ordinances and regulations.
An ordinance allowing waiver and variance to Ronald Malcolm and Tracy Malcolm for variance and waiver from the requirement of providing a sewer ejection pump. Pursuant to ordinance two one five seven for premises being constructed at lot twenty-eight in Vermillion View subdivision. Commonly known as one four nine Cavalier Court, LaSalle, Illinois and related matters.
Your honor, so moved.
Second. Motion by Alderman.
Second.
Patac, second by Alderman Reynolds and every, each other, Alderman has a copy? Take the roll, please.
Alderman Reynolds.
Aye.
Levery.
Obstand, I'm twenty-five percent owner.
Aye.
Crane.
Aye.
Demus.
Aye.
Patac.
Aye.
An ordinance amending the LaSalle city code, including amending ordinance numbers one nine five seven and one seven nine six. Regarding the international building code and related matters.
Jim, I apologize. I think we're not ready for this yet. I kinda wanted to have, uh, Brian Brown and Kurt and Dennis kinda go through it. See what things actually apply to us as a city. So we don't have things in there. It doesn't really respond. So. We'll need a little time. We're, we're on the right trajectory. I think we had till the end of the summer. We're, we're close. If anybody wants to push them up, we could say we have, but are you guys comfortable with that?
What year, what year are we looking at? Some modifications, I think?
Yes.
So like twenty twenty-four?
Two thousand twenty-four is the most current code that we would be working off of. Subject to win exceptions, the various, uh. Persons who weigh in would feel should not be applicable to LaSalle.
And what are we right now? Two thousand three, two thousand six, something like that?
Two thousand three.
Two thousand three?
Doesn't seem that long ago that we adopted that. Jordan, you weren't born yet, were you? Oh, yeah, you are. All right. I thank you for that. Carry on, Ms. Seacorder.
An ordinance further regulating responsible bidder requirements on public works projects and related matters.
We're gonna pass on this tonight. I think we had enough discussion for one night.
You comfortable with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, Alderman Crane, thank you. Let's go to, uh, no need for a second session. I anymore, I'm sorry, any more new business. I want to touch base on one thing. We had a nice car show on Sunday for Saturday downtown, uh, their second annual on the east side of B C of, uh, Joint Street. Uh, turned out to be a pretty nice day and I, and, uh, appreciate everybody who came down and supported that. Uh, weather was just perfect. So. Thank you to that group that put that on. That we appreciate it. Uh, no need for a second session tonight, gentlemen.
Total submitted seven hundred sixty-three thousand, six hundred seventy-nine dollars, seventy-one cents.
Your honor, I move that we accept, pay and file the bills. Does each and every Alderman have a copy?
Second.
Motion by Alderman Patac, some of Levery to pay the bills. Take the roll, please.
Alderman Levery.
Aye.
Jepson.
Aye.
Crane.
Aye.
Demus.
Aye.
Patac. Reynolds.
Aye.
Uh, one last thing. I'm just sorry, one more thing. This is, I promise to be the end. A lot of talk on the scooters, electric scooters and electric bikes. Uh, there's been some more litigate, um, we call that legislation on these passed by the state. Other towns are starting to do ordinances on it. So. Um, chief said he wanted to make sure, um, chief Jason, who's here, has a voice in that. So we will be acting on that soon. I know people brought that to my attention. Uh, so just stay tuned on that. We'll try to do. Again, sometimes it's good to make sure we see what everybody else has and we can kinda take maybe bits, bits of that one, bits of that one and come up with our own ordinance. So. Awesome.
There's gonna be a lot of electric scooters we're seeing on those.
Motion for adjournment.
Let me make a motion. We adjourned.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Reynolds, some of Crane, adjourned meeting, all in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carried.